To the first of three meetings tonight, my name is Dennis Buckley, Mayor of the City of Beach Grove, and at this time we will convene our Board of Sanitation meeting for Monday, August 7, 2017. In lieu of a roll call, I will ask each participant to introduce themselves, beginning on my far right. Dave Harrison.
Dan McMillan, Clerk Treasurer.
Craig Wiley, City Attorney.
Sandy Seward.
Thank you, Board. You've been presented a printed copy of the minutes of the previous meeting dated Monday, July 24, 2017. Floor is open for any questions, comments, or corrections.
I have none, thank you.
I have none.
No questions, comments, or corrections, I'll ask for a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
I'll make said motion.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. I vote aye, and the motion carries. Thank you. This evening, Board, you have two pages of wastewater claims in the amount of $62,552.62. Floor is open for any questions or comments.
I have none, thank you.
Nor do I.
No questions or comments, I'll ask for a motion to approve the wastewater claims dated August 7, 2017, in the amount of $62,552.62.
I'll make said motion.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye, and the motion carries. We have no unfinished business from the previous meeting, we have no new business tonight for the sanitation board. Comments from board members?
I have none, thank you.
Nor do I.
At that, no comments, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'll make said motion.
Second.
The meeting is adjourned at 6:02 PM. We will convene the Board of Public Works and Safety Meeting in five minutes. Good evening and welcome to the second of three meetings tonight. My name is Dennis Buckley, Mayor of the City of Beach Grove, and at this time we will convene our Board of Public Works and Safety Meeting for Monday, August 7, 2017. In lieu of a roll call, I will ask each participant to introduce themselves, beginning on my far right.
Dave Harrison. Dan McMillan, Clerk Treasurer.
Craig Wiley, City Attorney.
Sandy Seward.
Thank you, Board. You have been presented a printed copy of the minutes of the previous meeting dated Monday, July 24, 2017. Floor is open for any questions, comments, or corrections.
I have none, thank you.
I have none.
No questions, comments, or corrections, I'll ask for a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
I'll make said motion.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. I vote aye, and the motion carries. Thank you, Board. This evening, Board, you have 10 pages of corporate claims in the amount of $75,950.43. Floor is open for questions or comments.
And I have none, thank you.
Nor do I.
No questions or comments, I'll ask for a motion to approve the corporate claims dated August 7, 2017, in the amount of $75,950.43.
I'll make said motion.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 I vote aye, as well, and the motion carries. We have no unfinished business to carry over from the previous meeting. Under new business this evening, we have five items. The first is a handicap parking permit application for Deborah Morgan. I'll defer to the clerk for any explanation.
This new application for parking permit, she's turned in everything so far, and we just need approval from the board, and I'd recommend we do so.
Questions or comments?
I have none.
No.
If not, ask for a motion to approve the application for Deborah Morgan.
I'll make said motion.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I vote aye, as well, and the motion carries. Resolution number 12, 2017, is a memorandum of understanding between the City of Beach Grove and the Redevelopment Commission. At this time, I'll defer to legal counsel for explanation of the resolution.
Yeah, I think the resolution sets forth the payment for the, what we expect to be for the Greenway, and then there's a portion where the city is responsible for, it's a hundred and, what, $128,000, and we've agreed, the RDC agreed, has agreed to pay half of that. So the city's portion would be 64, RDC's portion would be 64.
Any, the floor is open for any questions or comments the board may have.
I have none, thank you.
No, I don't have any.
No questions, I'll ask the clerk to read the memorandum of understanding into the record, please.
Resolution number 12, 2017, memorandum of understanding, this memorandum of understanding is between the City of Beach Grove and the Beach Grove Redevelopment Commission. This MOU sets forth an understanding between the city and the RDC as it pertains to the payment for the construction of the Greenway project. Whereas on July 24, 2017, the city's Board of Works and Safety entered into a project coordination contract with the Indiana Department of Transportation for the construction of the Greenway project. Whereas the total cost of the Greenway project is $2,640,000, whereas pursuant to the agreement, NDOT agrees to pay 80% of the Greenway project, or $2,112,000. Whereas the city will pay the remaining 20% of the Greenway project, or $528,000. Whereas Franciscan Alliance has agreed to donate $400,000 for the Greenway project. Whereas the remaining cost of the Greenway project to be paid by the city is $128,000. Whereas the RDC has agreed to pay 50% of the remaining cost for the construction of the Greenway project, or $64,000. Whereas the city will likewise pay $64,000 for the Greenway project, and whereas the parties agree that the construction of the Greenway project is in the best interests of the citizens of the city. Now therefore be it resolved that the city shall pay $64,000 for the construction of the Greenway project, and now therefore be it further resolved that the RDC shall pay $64,000 for the construction of the Greenway project. And witness whereof, the parties here too have executed this MOU on the dates described below.
Thank you. Any further questions on this?
I have none.
If not, I'll ask for a motion to approve Resolution number 12, 2017.
I'll make said motion.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Next order of business is request for road closure for Halloween. I received an email on Saturday, the 29th of July, concerning a home at the corner of 19th and Churchman, and it says, "Dear Board of Works members, please find attached letter and map concerning road closure to foot traffic only during Halloween. We have enjoyed many trick-or-treat guests to our home over the years, and always look forward to providing a fun and free outdoor haunt for the neighborhood and surrounding neighborhoods' children. Last year we had quite a few and counted almost 900 trick-or-treat goblins. We gave a piece of candy to. This number does not reflect those who visited but did not want candy. Due to increased popularity of the haunt, we are expecting more than 1,000 children this year and their companions. Please take a moment from your very busy schedules to review our simple request." And was the letter attached to that, Dan?
Yeah.
Yeah, Dan could read the official letter into the record.
Dear Board of Works members, my name is Tamara Gray, and every Halloween we have free to the public haunted outdoor event at 202 North 19th. This home is owned by my father, Pete Passiosis, is on the corner of 19th and Churchman. Over the past couple of years, our following has grown considerably. We enjoy more than 800 trick-or-treaters in 2016. Your police department has graciously helped over the years by driving by as often as they could, and we have much appreciated their presence. This year we are expecting more than 1,000 trick-or-treaters to visit us on Halloween. With that many children concentrated in a one-block area, I fear we will soon have a close call with a vehicle. My letter today is to ask if it would be possible to close a couple of roads around our haunt to help avoid an unfortunate accident. Please find attached a map of the area with the intersections marked where we'd like to have access by car restricted. We ask that you approve these restrictions and that barricades be placed on Tuesday, October 31st, from 4:00 to 9:00 PM. We greatly appreciate your time and anxiously await your response. Thank you for your consideration."
Thanks, Dan. I sent this to the police chief and the fire chief, and I'd kind of like to hear what they have, their comments on this. Either one of you?
Board, I myself, I would oppose it. It blocks a couple of main roads in Beach Grove, and closing off Churchman, I think you'd send traffic through the neighborhoods, which you don't want to do. And usually when we close a road off like that, it's because the whole neighborhood wants it, not just one person. If they wanted, maybe Cleveland closed off from Churchman to 19th, it's not a short distance, but not Churchman and some of the other roads. That's not even asked for by other neighbors.
I appreciate that they sent the letter early enough where they can have some type of response back to them, they can change their plans. I agree with the police chief, Churchman Avenue should not be closed. I think by rerouting the traffic throughout the neighborhoods, it increases more of a liability for the traffic itself and the kids that's out there. I would appreciate if they did look at something like closing North 19th off, if they had a block party, and I would oppose it as written today.
Thank you, Chief. Floor is open for comments from board members.
Mark, it does say that, you know, you folks have done drive-bys, is it super congested?
Not any more than some of the other areas where they get four or 500 kids that come in to try to get candy, and I understand Beach Grove attracts a lot of kids, but I, closing those roads off, I think, puts traffic into a more dangerous situation.
Do you have concerns that they're now expecting over 1,000 people in one area? Does that have any concern?
Not any more than the rest of the city. That just, that night, everybody's out trying to watch kids crossing roads and stuff, and anyplace in the city is hazardous.
Thank you.
Dave, any comment?
No, no.
If not, I'll ask for a motion to either approve the request or deny the request.
Can we amend the request?
What would you like to hear?
That they either close off, just like Cleveland or 19th Street, at the recommendation of Chief.
We can, I support the chief's views. Dave, any?
Well, if it's like a block thing, I could see it, but it's just one house, I don't, I mean, we get 300 down our street. It's just, I'd recommend that we don't, we don't allow it, I guess.
Motion to deny.
I'll make said motion.
I second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I vote aye, as well, and we'll notify the folks who live at that house. Next up, request for a party on the street, Eagles and Dees Taps, and I'll defer to the clerk to read their request into the record.
Dees Taps and 700 Building LLC are excited to be hosting a block party event to bring awareness to Beach Grove Main Street and its merchants while having a bit of end-of-summer fun. The event is called "Party in the Street," and will take place on Saturday, August 19, from 5:00 to 11:00 PM. "Party in the Street" will consist of a live band, beer gardens, and food vendors. The music stage will be placed in the area of 7th Avenue and Main Street, the food vendors mid-block towards 8th Avenue, and the beer garden in between. We are requesting Main Street closure between 8th Avenue and 6th Avenue, and alley-to-alley between 3:30 PM to 11:30 PM. We believe this will provide the best safety for our city and anticipated 1,000 attendees. Communication with all Main Street business owners and residents will be attempted by hand-delivery of letter with pertinent information. For additional information, contact Brent Crouch or Amy Masterson.
Thank you. I know the police chief signed off on the excise, saying, "Chief, do you have any comments on it?" Either, 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 chief.
I was aware of the signing off for their permit, but I didn't know that it was going to be from 6 to 8. I have no problem as long as we get the barricades up and enough notification. Saturday's probably a little bit busy, but we always seem to do pretty well notify the officers and the fire department.
Chief, any, any issue with it?
The only issue we have is just make sure that they keep most of sidewalks clear and around the areas for the hydrant access. I would anticipate this is similar to the events we've had on Main Streets in the past, and appreciate the heads up for them.
Brad, any problem accommodating their request? They would have to have totes and barricades.
Yeah, none on our end.
Okay, I'll open it up for any comments from board members.
Do they want to close from 3:30 to 11:30?
Mm-hmm, that's what their request is. From, from 6th to 8th Street on Main. So it would just, it would be on Main Street at two spots, and then north, or on 7th north of Main Street there, at the alley, they would close in.
And they're going to be playing music? What time do we usually cut off?
11 o'clock.
Are they going to cut the music off at 11?
We can, that could be part of our approval.
I say aye.
Also, when I met with them, I wanted to make sure that, that any business that was open down there, that they make sure that those people are made aware of it. I'm not sure how many businesses will be open after 3 o'clock on a Saturday, but there are some, and I just want to make sure that they're accommodated as well.
I see what they're saying, they're saying, "Party will take place 5 to 11," but they want the street closed off 3:30, 11:30, which makes sense, I guess, that they had a little time to get everything done.
And this is, they've included insurance. It's a joint effort between Dees Taps, 700 LLC, and the Eagles, and the Eagles has provided a copy of the insurance for the event as well.
I have no issues.
Dave, any other comments?
No.
I got a question. Who will be monitoring alcohol to make sure it doesn't leave the premises? Because I know that has been an issue before, especially, you know, it was just in their parking lot, and now it's from 6 to 8th Street.
I'm going to guess it would have to be the people at Dees.
It would be the Alcohol Beverage Commission, and they'd have to send out officers. They have, Dees has a permit for an outside vending, and then the Beverage Commission would have to send an officer or two out to make sure that they comply with it.
Any other comments or questions?
So if they have to have their permits, don't they have to have like, like a roped-off area, or like a beer garden, so they're not walking up and down the streets, or?
Right, they have to have a confined area, designated entrance and exit.
If they're outside?
If they're outside.
Okay. And they do have those permits, you're saying, Mark?
Dees Taps is the one that needs it, because they're expanding out.
Okay.
Eagles are, they're already good together.
I would, if there's no further questions, I'll ask for a motion to approve the request, provided the music stops at 11, and the sale and control of alcohol is in compliance with the excise police recommendation.
I'll make said motion.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye, and the motion carries. The last item is retirement for employee at the Police Department, Starla Maurice.
This is a letter from Starla Maurice, she is one of our office personnel. This letter is to announce my retirement from Beach Grove Police Department, Office Staff, effective September 11th of 2017. I would like to thank the Police Department of the City of Beach Grove for the many opportunities and experiences that I have been given, me as an employee of the Police Department. I have enjoyed working with and learning from my colleagues for the last 14 years, but I'm excited to move on in the next phase of my life. Starla actually take vacation starting, her last day to work will be August 18th, and I believe she has three weeks of vacation, and she's going to use that up till September 11th, which will be her retirement date.
Floor is open for questions or comments.
I have none.
I have none.
I'll ask for a motion to approve the, accept the letter of retirement for Starla Maurice.
Make said motion.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I vote aye, as well, and the motion carries, and we wish her the best. I seen her the other day. She seemed to be doing all right.
She's done good, she's a little torn, her husband just retired a couple of weeks ago, so they're ready to do some traveling.
All right, thanks, chief. Comments from board members?
I have none.
I have none.
Now, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'll make said motion.
Second.
The meeting is adjourned at 6:27 PM. We will convene the city council meeting this evening at 7:00 PM. Good evening and welcome to the third and final meeting tonight. My name is Dennis Buckley, Mayor of the City of Beach Grove, and at this time we will convene our city council meeting for Monday, August 7, 2017. In lieu of a roll call, I will ask each participant to introduce themselves, beginning on my left.
Buddy Templin, Councilman-at-Large.
Jim Brooks, Council-at-Large.
Dave Harrison, Councilman, District 5.
Dan McMillan, Clerk Treasurer.
Craig Wiley, City Attorney.
Beto Mascari, Councilman, District 2.
Elizabeth Lamping, Council, District 1.
Chris Duffer, District 3.
Evan Day, District 4.
Thank you. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. A couple special presentations. One I put together today, and I'll ask the clerk to submit it in the official minutes of the meeting. The City of Beach Grove would like to thank Lieutenant Aaron Allen of the Southport Police Department for his dedicated service to the citizens of Southport and to his fellow police officers on the Southport Fire Department. Lieutenant Allen gave his life while coming to the aid of persons involved in an honorable accident on July 27, 2017. May you rest in peace. So Dan, could you put that into the minutes?
Mayor, could we show our respect with a minute of silence?
Okay, thank you. This evening, council, I've invited our friends from Crossroad Engineers to come and give us an update on the Franciscan Trail, so I'll turn it over to Trent Newport and Mike Cruchel.
Good evening, thanks for having us. So, real quick, my name is Trent Newport, I'm the president of Crossroad Engineers, and then this was a collaboration team on the design side between Crossroad Engineers and Schneider Corporation, and Michael Cruchel is here with Schneider. I've also got my designer that's working, leading the project in our office, and that's Matt McElroy. So we'll also be here to answer questions from the public after the meeting, but what we wanted to do is kind of give a brief overview. I know you, I've been here before to talk about this project, and I know that, you know, we go through a lot of time, and people are like, "Well, what happened to that project?" Because it's a federal aid project, so it takes a lot of time to get through all the hoops, and in the very beginning, the first things that we do are go out and survey the corridor. Obviously, it's a very rough corridor for survey work, and then also we start on the environmental process, and that's basically seeing, you know, doing studies and seeing, make, to see how this path impacts different parts of the, of the project areas, so the schools and so forth, and we'd have to do a report, send that to the Federal Highway for their review and approval, and so we're kind of in that stage, as well as some preliminary designs. We had what in the process we call is a preliminary field check, which is our first time to have an actual meeting where we invite NDOT to come and the utilities to come. We don't have a lot of utilities impacted because of where this trail is, but we have some in the park areas specifically, and then out at the east end on Emerson Avenue. So they, we had some utilities attend to that meeting, and we have set an alignment out in the field, and I know we get calls, and we get some people that get pretty anxious about that, and I understand that, but those are kind of the first take, and especially on a project like this, our goal is to set those stakes where we, we think we want the alignment, and then we get out there and we walk the area to make sure that we don't need to tweak it here and there, so, you know, that's, that's kind of the stage that we're in right now. So these maps that I have behind us, I see this one was left over from a previous meeting, so this one that's on the far end here pretty much replicates that map and the, what is the mixture of the yellow and the green lines on that. So we had some different alternatives, we were looking at different areas, and we ended up selecting this as the route that we're going forward with. So starting up here at 13th Avenue, it comes around through Sarah Bolton Park, comes down along- owned drive that goes, uh, by Taco Bell, ends up back at Skilman. Uh, so there will be easement rights that we'll need to get, uh, from those property owners. We expect right now to be on the south side of that road, uh, where there is a swale. We'll make some improvements to the drainage to fit a trail in there and then get out to, um, to Emerson Avenue. And so, uh, out there, there's already, uh, pedestrian signals at that signal to get, uh, people safely across, uh, and basically can get on the sidewalks to head to the school. So this is the connection, it's the same, and you can kinda compare, uh, what we, what we had originally, so there's really not a lot of big changes from this one. I just mentioned that there are some, some greens and yellows on areas that we were looking at different, uh, opportunities, uh, to, to take different routes, and either because of cost or impact, uh, we decided on what's on that board to the left. So these two boards are, uh, that's such a big scale, uh, we wanted to kinda replicate that so you can compare to this original one, but these are just blown up. So this is kind of the west half that is more north-south, and this is the east half that's more, uh, east-west, so through the school property. Uh, both of these label, uh, trailheads, uh, and, uh, and pedestrian bridges, and I'm gonna let, uh, Michael talk a little bit about those features and then I'll talk about schedule and cost.
Made sense to try to line these two up, but now it's gonna look goofy. Thanks Trent. Um, my name is Michael Crochell, a landscape architect with Schneider. Um, our role in this is, as Trent mentioned, the, the amenities, pieces, the trailheads, the plantings, sort of the icing on the cake, you might say, after, uh, the engineers figure out what the trail's gonna look like. Um, right now, we've sketched out five trailheads to go at different points along the trail. When you get a chance to look at these, uh, up close, you'll see them numbered one through five. There's two primary, uh, access points as we see it, uh, one at Sarah Bolton Park and one at Don Chalice Park, and those will be, maybe we bump them up to a slightly higher level. It's gonna be a point where you can access the trail. There'd be a map there that gets you oriented, so if you've driven in from a distance to use the trail, you, you'll see where you are, you'll see where you can go, east and west from those points. Um, there's three other smaller trailheads, other access points, but they're not, they're not, uh, where we have existing parking lots or restroom facilities, so we would say these are a second tier. Um, at the east end, right at Emerson, where this project is gonna terminate, right at Hornet Drive in Emerson. Um, second one would be behind the intermediate school where Fourth dead-ends into the school property, north of Don Chalice Park. We'll have an access point there, so folks that are either coming down from the neighborhood, coming south to get to the trail can reach it there without having to take, um, Ninth all the way down. Is it Ninth or Fifth?
Fifth.
Ninth. You won't have to take Ninth all the way down to get to the park, to get to the trail. You can come down Fourth and get it right there. Um, the third point is all the way at the north end, uh, Thirteenth, just south of Main. That's where this project will terminate on the north end, so we'll have a, again, a, what we call a trail had to be a, a trashcan, a couple of benches, an access point to get you onto the trail and down into Sarah Bolton Park. So that's what these five sketches show, is those, those five locations, how we think they lay out. The one at Sarah Bolton and the one at Don Chalice Park are a bit larger, you'll have a bit more signage, you are here, kind of information, what the, what the rules of the trail are, what hours it's available for use, you know, the courtesies about watching your dog and staying to the right or, or passing on the left, basic trail use things. Most people know that. Um, some folks won't pay any attention, but it does give the law enforcement folks a tool to use to enforce rules if problems prop up, and they may not, and it may not be a problem, but we're gonna post them so that we can use that tool if we need to. Second piece I'd talk about, and again, you can see this better when you get up here, there are a myriad of options. What are the benches gonna look like? What is, what's the signage style gonna be? What are the trashcans? All of that. We're working with the city to make sure that what we designed into this is something that they can maintain in the long term. Um, we've talked about placing mile markers along the trail, so if you're out exercising and you wanna know how much ground you've covered, you know, we're gonna mark it every quarter-mile, which is a convenience thing for folks that are exercising. It's also helpful if there is an accident or an incident out there and you need help for help. You have some idea, I'm just south of mile marker one and a quarter, and that's gonna help. Need an ambulance for some reason, it's gonna help them find you more quickly, so that, two purposes to that tool. Um, we've talked about Indianapolis uses a, a concrete pedestal along the trail every half or quarter-mile. Uh, working with folks in Carmel, they use more of a decal that's right on the trail, on the pavement. Less expensive, simpler to take care of. Um, that's the way we're leaning right now, uh, marking it that way. We've talked about some trail safety call boxes. Um, they're a blessing and a curse. It's good to have them out there. It's, it's, uh, you know, a blue phone like you'd see on IEPUI's campus where if you're in a moment of panic and you need to get ahold of somebody, there's, you know it's just a little ways down the trail if you've used the facility before. The curse is you gotta make sure it's always working, or you end up on Channel Six, and we don't wanna do that. So that's a maintenance aspect. Again, we're gonna work with the city. We've had those conversations about. Not overcommitting, we don't wanna put in things that you can't take care of, so we're gonna settle on what are the key places that we need something like that and design those into the project. Uh, the last piece I'll touch on is the pedestrian bridge. Trent walked you through, and there are four points that we need to cross these two creeks. Um, we're really blessed that the city already owns the majority of this property. It's floodplain, it's not buildable for residential or commercial use. That's why these developers turned it over to the city in the first place. But it does force us to cross several times in order to use the property we have. So these are, uh, a pedestrian scale bridge. There's a bit, there's a sketch here of sort of a before and after of how that bridge is gonna drop into the landscape, and we're gonna, uh, be picking steel and wood, concrete materials. Um, and you've seen these along Pleasant Run, if you've used some of Indianapolis's trails. Fall Creek has several along it. Uh, it's a pedestrian scale bridge, we're not talking massive vehicular construction, but we are going to design them so that if maintenance folks need to use it, get a pickup truck across it, or if we need to get an ambulance across it, it can take that load. Uh, it'll be a steel truss bridge with either a concrete or wood deck. We haven't really settled on that yet. And we're thinking not bright colors. We want it to blend in in the landscape, uh, so it's gonna be earth tones, greens and browns, something along those lines. Uh, for my friends on the Greenscape Commission, because I know this question is coming, or the committee, we will be doing some plantings. We've looked at, uh, what is the city's acceptable tree planting list? We've looked at the DNR's list, because we'll be getting some permits here through DNR. Uh, the plantings we select are gonna be native plants to the area that are on both of your lists, so that we're sure that everybody can be happy with what goes in in the end. Trent, you're gonna touch on a couple of things here?
Yeah. So a couple of features, and, uh, this is a, uh, a cross-section of the path, so if you, if you slice the path in half and you're looking at it, you know, a person would be standing right here. And what we wanted to show is there are some areas, uh, where it gets a little tricky with slopes, uh, and the drainage on one way, so we, we've got some features that we will be adding in some of those areas. We could have some walls on one side. Uh, my office backs up to where the, uh, trail goes and, and for part of the area, and it's a pretty steep bank, so we may have to kinda cut it in and have a wall on one side. Uh, and then on some other, other areas where the creek is down here, we may have a wood railing. Uh, if the drop-off is too steep, then we get into a safety standard where that's recommended. So here's some pictures here of a, of a wood railing being constructed, uh, and then beyond that wood railing, uh, in that area where the creek bank is, um, once we disturb that to build the trail, what we find is if you don't do something there to protect it, it'll just continue to erode away. Uh, and there's already some erosion along there, so we have to protect that, because if not, that erosion will come and take the path away eventually. Uh, and so this is called an articulated mat. It's one of the, uh, ideas that we would have. We've actually used it down at Sarah Bolton Park. Um, don't know if you can see it anymore, but, uh, cause it was very effective there, but it's on the banks, and it's, uh, it's almost like taking concrete cinder blocks and, and cabling them together, laying them down and filling them in with dirt, and then put plantings in. So it's a base for those plantings to stay held in. It's done a great job there at the, at the bridge, and so it might be something that we use along there. Um, so we've kinda talked about, these are some ideas, these are some places that we're at, but, you know, we're about thirty-five percent way through the project, uh, just as a gauge, and so there's a lot of details yet to be worked out. Um, we do have some stakeholder meetings that will become more and more frequent. Um, uh, that, you know, I mentioned we did a preliminary field check meeting, that was kinda the first one. We're gonna continue to have those as we get into more of these details and decide on the items, uh, like Michael said, you know, what does the city wanna do? What do they wanna maintain? We'll give them different choices on railings and, and erosion protection, the bridge, obviously a big one, the trailheads, uh, they may have options on different kinda things that they wanna do, plantings and so forth. So, uh, we're gonna be into a lot of those over the next, uh, really year and a half. And I know it sounds, uh, odd again, but these federal projects get programmed out in, in some length in the forecast, and so the schedule for this project is, uh, that we would have, we would basically be done with design at the end of two thousand and nineteen, uh, and then construction in two thousand and twenty. Uh, right now, the lighting would be in July of twenty, so it would start, there's a potential it could be faster than that. If we get the project, project ready, uh, we might be able to take advantage of, uh, of some money that's available from another community that didn't get their project ready. So that's the position we wanna be in. Uh, we wanna be ready to go ahead of time, and so we're working towards that. Uh, the big things that are, take time besides the design are the environmental, especially when you're touching parks and stuff like this. Uh, and then even though we don't have a lot of right-of-way for the right-of-way length of the project, we do have some key parcels that we need, and it, it may take some time to get those. Um, as far as, uh, just, and, and all these numbers are the same that I've given out before, but for those that weren't aware, you know, the construction estimate, uh, that was, or the, what was budgeted for the project is two-point-nine million dollars, so that means to build this thing, uh, two-point-nine million, two-point-three of that, two-point-three-two actually, is federal money. Five-hundred-and-eighty of that is local money, uh, but the, uh, but it's, my understanding, St. Francis has pledged four-hundred thousand of that. Uh, this, the city has some other local, uh, monies that they, uh, will do, obviously our design, but also inspection, uh, but, you know, they're really in good shape with the federal money and the monies that, um, St. Francis has, uh, pledged for the project. So, uh, those are budgets for us, so that's what we're designing to. A lot of the things we talked about that we're gonna be making decisions and presenting to the city for options, they're all gonna be things, okay, these are in the budget, right? So, uh, uh, we have a large project and a lot of opportunities to do some different things, but ultimately, uh, it may come down to cost. Um, we are going to continue and have, uh, more meetings like this. Uh, we'll actually have, you know, maybe even separate public meetings or come back to the council with some updates. Uh, we have another meeting like this, uh, at the RDC on Thursday at seven P.M., uh, and we will continue to come back through that. I think the RDC is helping to fund, I don't know if they are or not, but we've been presenting-
It's a fifty-fifty split.
Okay, thank you. It's a fifty-fifty split between the city and the RDC, helping to fund the local matches that are left over after the federal and, and the, uh, and the pledge by, uh, St. Francis. So, uh, we will be back at those meetings at a minimum. Uh, we may also come out to try to hit some of the HOA meetings in some of the neighborhoods, uh, where we can kinda get a better, uh, audience of the people that are gonna be right along the trail. So that's gonna be something, we'll start talking to people, finding out when those annual meetings are, and try to piggyback on those so that it's, uh, maybe easy to do, so. I think with that, uh, Michael and I'll be able to take any questions.
Trent, can you, uh, give a description to the audience of how wide the trail, what, what the trail will look like?
So, uh, asphalt, uh, trail, ten-foot, twelve-foot in width, sorry, um, um, and, and asphalt section. So there's a pretty standard, uh, section that the, the NDOT has, uh, on federal aid projects like this, as far as the depth of asphalt and stone underneath. We have to get, get a good base to build on, uh, and then obviously the places that'll be different would be, uh, at the trailheads, uh, that, those areas will be concrete or pavers, different materials, and then at the bridges, uh, obviously different, probably, uh, wood plank or something like that, so.
Can you just briefly talk about Phase Two?
Yeah, so, um, at the, uh, end of this, we talked about, we kinda head right in here to, uh, to Hornet Avenue on the east end of Emerson, and I think the vision is that, uh, we would, uh, submit for funding this year, uh, to try to get funding for what we're calling Phase Two, which will go, uh, through the school property, uh, and we talked about some different routes, but somehow probably come in and wrap around and get to the sou- southern property line, like on the south side of the football field, and around to the east side of the football field, coming up, making a connection to that neighborhood. Uh, forgive me, I forget the name of the neighborhood that's basically due east of the football field, that has a, a dead-end street there, make a connection there, so you'd have a trailhead, um, and, and then kinda meander up behind where the softball diamonds are, uh, along that woods, along the backside of the, of the, of the school, and then, uh, through that big grass area and basically make a connection up to Churchman. Uh, and for those of you that, uh, I'm sure people have seen the, the Churchman pathwork that's being done, there were some done last year, uh, and we're continuing to go east out to Arlington, so that'll all be done, and we would connect into that, that sidewalk, uh, with that future. So that's what we're calling Phase Two. Uh, we intend to go after funding. Uh, we intend to be successful in the funding.
Yes.
We're hopeful, and that, you know, especially when they see a project like this of this size, and this is a big trail project, in, in the amount of money that was awarded, I can see that this thing is going forward on schedule, uh, they, you know, that really bodes well for getting another phase of a project done. Okay? Any questions?
What's the entire length of it?
Two-point-five, eight miles.
Thank you. Two-point-six miles. And I, I don't know what that'll add to it, uh, Phase Two, but, uh, I, off the top of my head, I'd guess at least another mile, and maybe a mile and a half. Anybody else? Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, thanks Trent. Mike? We'll move to, uh, public comments. Counsel?
Yeah, yeah, six people have signed up to speak. The first one's Amber. Step forward, please. Amber, will you please state your name and your address, and you have three minutes.
Hi, my name's Amber Fox. I live at five-oh-five Dangerfield Drive. Um, I actually grew up living next door to Liz. So I'm born and raised in Beach Grove, and, um, I heard there's a lot of talk about the chicken thing, and I wasn't sure if it was even gonna be mentioned in today's meeting. However, I was wanting to tell my side of it and why I feel it should-
And those of you that, I'm sure people have seen the Churchman pathwork that's being done, there were some done last year, and we're continuing to go east out to Arlington, so that'll all be done, and we would connect into that sidewalk with that future. So that's what we're calling Phase Two. We intend to go after funding. We intend to be successful in the funding. We're hopeful, you know, especially when they see a project like this of this size, and this is a big trail project, and the amount of money that was awarded, they can see that this thing is going forward on schedule, they, you know, that really bodes well for getting another phase of a project done. Any questions?
What's the entire length of it?
2.5, eight miles.
Thank you. 2.6 miles. And I don't know what that'll add to it, Phase Two, but off the top of my head, I'd guess at least another mile, maybe a mile and a half. Anybody else? Thank you.
All right, thanks Trent, Mike. We'll move to public comments. Counsel?
Yes, yes, six people have signed up to speak. The first one's Amber. Step forward, please. Amber, will you please state your name and your address, and you have three minutes.
Hi, my name's Amber Fox. I live at 505 Dangerfield Drive. I actually grew up living next door to Liz. So I'm born and raised in Beach Grove, and I heard there's a lot of talk about the chicken thing, and I wasn't sure if it was even going to be mentioned in today's meeting. However, I was wanting to tell my side of it and why I feel it should be okay to have them, if that's okay. Okay, so, I've actually had chickens in my backyard now going on four years. I do live in Beach Grove, and I feel the benefits versus risks of chickens are the same as having a dog or cat. With all of, I've got everything to back up what I'm saying. Most of it actually comes from the Centers for Disease Control website. They actually say that it's good to have backyard chickens because it helps decrease pests and keep weeds out of your yards. And everything that a lot of people are worried about, that chickens can carry or pass on, or, you know, like the avian flu, chickens are going to carry avian flu. Actually, proof and the research I've done is backyard flocks, there's never been a case of avian flu in a backyard flock. The flocks that have had this avian flu were adjacent to flocks that were 1,000 or more chickens. And that goes with salmonella, E. coli. If you look at the things that chickens carry, dogs and cats carry the exact same things, you're at the exact same risk for carrying or getting these ailments from cats and dogs. And then dogs and cats actually carry twice as much as backyard chickens do. And again, I do have copies for everybody if they're interested. As of the noise, I've heard a lot of people say, well, they're noisy, and you shouldn't have them because they're too noisy. Well, actually, the proof states that the noise, they only create about 70 decibels of sound, and that's two feet away from a chicken. If you stand next to a dog, a dog actually creates 70 to 100 decibels of noise. And that's been backed up by research that I've done as well. If you're in the neighbor's yard, they only create about 50 decibels of noise, and that's about general conversation level, is what they say. And chickens go to sleep at night, mine go to bed around 7:30, 8 o'clock, and they're in bed until 8 o'clock when I let them out. So, they don't create noise at night because they're nocturnal birds, or they're not nocturnal, they, at dusk, when it starts getting dark, they go away, they go home, because of course they are scared of predators, so they naturally will walk into their coops and go home, and I lock them up. So I don't have a problem with, you know, noise after dusk. The other things that they're saying is the manure. Like, oh, well, they're smelly birds, they make a lot of poop. No, they don't. The proof that I found hints eat about a pound and a half of food, actually, 1.15 pounds of feed per chicken a week. Of what they eat, only a third of that becomes poop. So, that's not really a lot of poop if you look at a chicken. If you look at dogs, a five-pound dog eats the exact same amount as a chicken, and they actually poop twice as much. So if you look at dog poop versus chicken poop, there's no comparison. And the dog poop, like dog manure versus cat manure versus chicken manure, they all carry the exact same viruses or equally as salmonella. So, when you're trying to compare manure to manure, you're comparing apples to apples. There's no difference in manure with chickens. The benefits of chickens are, for me, my daughter is high functioning.
You have about 30 seconds.
Okay, my daughter's autistic, and for her, they're a sensory relief for her. And with that, she's been able to overcome her social anxiety, and it's strengthened her emotional skills with school. So that's how they benefit us. And with proper education and teaching, there's, it really almost eradicates the risks and health problems that people want to complain about with chickens. So, that's that. I have six chickens, and they're very healthy, and vinegar water cleans the yard, and I really don't even have to clean the yard, but we clean the vinegar, the coops out with vinegar water, and I've never had any sick chickens or any problems with sick chickens or family members or kids getting sick.
Thank you.
One question. Do you ever go on vacation?
Yes.
What do you do as your chickens?
My son stays at the house, and he takes care of the chickens.
Don't pack them up and take them with you then, huh?
Oh, is that yours?
Yeah.
So, yeah, when I go on vacation, my son stays at the house, and he takes care of the chickens.
Wait a minute.
Oh, this is yours, guys, if you want it.
No, I'm looking for something.
Okay, did I take up something of yours?
Yeah, right here.
All right, Dan Pavy.
Thanks, Amber.
I also brought some city's regulations and their, like, guidelines about permits and how to keep chickens in the city, and kind of the things that they go by.
Sit your address, sir.
Good evening, Bear Buckley, and members of the Beach Grove City County Council, City Council. My name's Dan Pavy, and I'm a 45-year resident of the city of Beach Grove at 134 South 13th Avenue. First off, the ordinance states that citizens of Beach Grove have an interest in keeping chickens. I don't agree with that statement, it makes it sound like all citizens have an interest, and I don't, and I'm sure there are others that don't. I'm opposed to the Beach Grove General Ordinance Number 7, 2017. The ordinance is fairly well-written, but I have some done, a lot of research on the subject as well, and here are my main reasons for not wanting any of my Beach Grove neighbors to raise chickens. One, smelly droppings. Chickens poop often and indiscriminately, and it does smell bad. Coops can be cleaned, I'll agree with that, but the chicken runs, they might not be cleaned up so easily. So, and I don't think you can adequately legislate stink. Dogs are easier to clean up, you can see that, right? Don't think you can see the chickens, but you can smell them. Noise, even hens are noisy. If you laid eggs, you'd be noisy too. Rodents, number three, rodents are often attracted to kitchen, chicken coops, sorry, and chicken feed. The one-inch bird-proof wire will not keep out mat mice and rats. Yes, the chicken feed must be stored in rat-proof containers, but there will be chicken feed on the ground in the runs. And that will attract the mice and rats. Conflicts with wildlife. Many predators, for example, hawks and coyotes covet chickens and their eggs. Maybe they won't be able to get at the chickens with the wire that has to be there, but the hawks and coyotes will be in the neighborhood, they'll be after dogs, cats, and you've got to watch your kids, they could get bitten. Ailing chickens. Like people and any other animal, chickens are vulnerable to disease involving all body systems. Problems range from parasites to respiratory disease to neurological disorders. Marilyn Ritzy, who as I believe is a resident in Beach Grove, her mother lost her main sight in her left eye due to histoplasmosis. That was caused by chicken droppings in the coop and soil when she was young. Now, most important to me, property values. There's a lot of debate as to whether having chickens in a neighborhood has any effect on property values. I can give you realtors that say it does, and other realtors that say it does not. However, it is a fact that if we were trying to sell our home, and a prospective buyer were to realize there were chickens in a neighbor's yard, they might not even consider buying our house, and that would have a huge indirect effect upon our property value. So I encourage you all to vote no on General Ordinance Number 7, 2017, allowing chickens in Beach Grove without at least a stipulation of having at least one acre. Most of their lots are just way too small. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Carly?
Hi, my name is Carly Harper, and I'm here, I do not live in Beach Grove at the moment. We have a house pending on 357 North 16th Street. We have inspection Thursday, so hopefully that goes well, and then we will be able to be a part of the community here. I'm a health coach and a personal trainer, and a lot of the work that I do with meal planning and nutrition goals involves eggs, therefore involves chickens. And I would like to state that even though we go over chickens being a public nuisance, and they're loud, and all the things that could happen with chickens, there are real health benefits to growing, to having chickens in your backyard and eating the eggs from your backyard chickens. There's less cholesterol in each leg, egg, which has more HDL, which is the good cholesterol that we all need. There's less saturated fat, and there's an increase in vitamin A, D, and E, which an egg is the best source of vitamin A besides liver. And I know as Americans, not a lot of us eat that. Therefore, that is your one source of vitamin A, which is necessary, necessary to continue on. There's also more omega-3s in a backyard egg, and this really goes in harmony with omega-6s. The standard American diet has a huge amount of omega-6s, and that is what leads to inflammation and heart disease. And so actually, the more omega-3s that you can get, which again, comes from a backyard egg, is better for overall heart health as well. So why is it that a backyard chicken has more nutrient density than one you can buy at the store? Especially when nowadays you can get free, free-range eggs at the store, organic eggs at the store. Well, when you actually look at the FDA labels of what those mean, all it means is that they have access to outside 51% of the time, but they have no restrictions on what they eat, beet cutting, forced molting done by starvation, and no third-party auditing. Beet cutting is so they don't attack each other in these huge warehouses, and also the molting is done so they'll lay more eggs at a rapid pace. And it's, I compare it to a garden. So if you have bad soil in your garden, you won't grow anything that's even worth eating, and you won't get any of the vitamins and nutrients from that. And so if you put a chicken in a warehouse that has a beet cut, and it's eating whatever it's fed, with no one testing what it's eating at all, and then you go get those eggs from the store, that is what you're eating. It matters what your food eats. Also, they can bring a community together. So, besides the health benefits of just eating your own backyard eggs, you can share them with the public. We're a military family who's decided to come back to Indiana. We lived in Hawaii where my landlord had 60 chickens on property less than this big, and they were not noisy, they were not disgusting, because he took good care of them. And so when I do talk about chickens and the health benefits of it, it does come with the assumption that they are being taken care of as well. And with being able to do that, I helped take care of 60 chickens, and it was wonderful. We took them to the farmer's market, and within that city of Kailua, we were able to feed our little town, we made friends, we made community, and it also taught my sons the value of growing your own food, caring for your own animals, and appreciating where your food also comes from.
You have about 30 seconds, okay?
Okay. And with all that said, again, being a potential new member of this community, I know that that was one way as a military family, we were able to branch out and meet people and help the community. And I'd really, it would be a dream of mine personally to be able to come here to Indiana, to Beach Grove where I did grow up, and be able to share that with the community as well. Taking chickens from being a potential public nuisance and the fear of what could happen with chickens, to taking them to a public service and bringing the community together. Thank you.
Thank you.
Pam Stalard?
I'm Pam Stalard, I live at 711 Churchman Avenue. I've never raised chickens. I don't know anything about chickens. I know a lot of people want chickens. A lot of the opposition has been property values. I contacted the city of Carmel, I contacted the town of Zionsville, both of these places have had chickens for several years. I also have information from a Realtor. The city of Carmel sent me a letter, "Per your request, I'm writing to let you know that I've not noticed a decrease in property values since our zoning ordinance amendment to allow hens on residential properties went into effect. Based on the U.S. Census data, home values have increased since 2010, when the ordinance was adopted. In 2000, the median home value in Carmel Clay was $200,000, and when the ordinance was adopted in 2010, the median home value was $285,000. In 2015, it rose to $304,000. The ordinance was expanded in 2016 to allow a maximum of six hens. Originally, it was just three. And there has been yet to be an updated survey regarding home values in Carmel. Please let me know if you have any other questions." I also asked if they required a permit from residents. They said, no, they do not. Zionsville did not send me a letter. They sent me a copy of their animal ordinance. "No owner shall allow his or her animals not to be limited to dogs and chickens to be outside his or her premises or place of business within the urban district or property immediately adjacent. It'll be a violation." Blah, blah. "Person who possesses or harbors more than 10 chickens at one time." Okay, they're allowing their people to have 10 chickens. These chickens, this limitation restricts the 10 chickens, no roosters, just like Carmel, no roosters. The, if you violate this, it's $25, first three violations, and then $75 after that. The animals have to be restricted. A chicken is not allowed to roam free on any public property or the property neighboring the animal's owner without express written permission. The animal has to be either in a coop or in a yard confined by a fence securing the animal to the owner's premises." And that's about it on that. Scoring officers can do stuff. I also asked them about their permits. They don't have permits either that the residents have to have. I explained to them in each of these places that it has been proposed that we have anywhere between a $100 and $500 permit per year, per resident. Each of these city halls laughed and said, "Somebody doesn't want chickens in Beach Grove."
30 seconds, Pam.
I had a letter, here we go. "I can tell, I can, I cannot tell you that it will bring down your property values." This is from Janet Stitt, a Realtor with Carpenter Realtors. "What I will tell you would be that your neighbors may not like it. There are city ordinances that regulate how you are to house them. In Woodruff Place, they have homeowners that have chickens, and it has not brought their property values down, and there is a historic area, and one of the houses they had on tour had chickens and a chicken coop." Thank you.
Thank you, Pam. Lieutenant Farrar?
Captain.
Captain, my fault.
It's all right.
No, no slight.
Lieutenant for 10 years or so. Scott Farrar, I work for the Beach Grove Police Department, I do live in the city of Beach Grove. I just wanted to say thank you to the citizens and to the public of the south side of Indianapolis and Beach Grove. The support that law enforcement received over the past two weeks has been greatly appreciated, and I know from personal experience that it is a great source of comfort to the grieving family. It's also a great show of support to the officers who are left behind to continue on the mission. It's a, it's a terrible reminder when something like this happens of the risk that we take when we just put on the uniform, when we're just out there patrolling. We don't have to respond to a high-risk call, we don't have to be part of the SWAT team. Like Deputy Chief Waters, it could just happen just driving home from work. And then like Lieutenant Aaron Allen, it can happen when you're trying to help people. And so, I just want to say thank you to the citizens, mostly the south side of Indianapolis, but of Beach Grove. You guys, it's a good side of town to work on because we almost, we usually get a steady stream of support from the citizens, and we appreciate that. I did want to, I gave Dan McMillan, the Clerk Treasurer, one of the, what do they call it, programs from the funeral at Banker's Life. It has where contributions can be made to Lieutenant Allen's family, and he is going to put that up on the city's website, so if any- So if anybody would like to go to the city's website and make a contribution to his family, I'm sure that would be greatly appreciated. But thank you all. And I also wanted to mention, thank you to the mayor and the former mayor and the city attorney. They attended the services at Bankers Life and anyone else that attended the services. But I also wanted to thank my officers. Both the honor guard and several of our officers participated in the details, and some of the ceremonies that had to be done had to be rendered. And it's, it's a tough thing to ask these officers to do, but they took time away from their families on Friday nights and Saturday to show the proper respect, and I really appreciate that from our department. So thank you to our department, and thank you to all the citizens that stepped up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Tammy. Tammy, state your name and your address, please.
Tammy Wantlington, 75, South 10th Avenue. I'm actually not going to talk about chickens. I know you guys can't believe that. I want to talk about the people. Just, okay, can you raise your hand if you came and you're in support of this, the chicken ordinance? These are, this is our community, you guys. They came out for this. I don't know what kind of a turnout you normally get, but I think this is awesome. This, this seems silly to some people, and I've seen some folks say this seems trivial, and, you know, it's only a few people that want them, and who cares about those few people that want them? But look at the community you have. Look at the way people are connecting with one another over something that seems like no big deal, right? So anyway, you guys make me want to cry. I love you all, and you're so amazing. And I really see this as an opportunity to strengthen our community and to attract people here, because one thing that our whole globe is beginning to lack is human connection. We're all stuck on our phones, but this, this is people connecting with people, and birds. So I'm just really thankful for, for you guys and for pushing this forward and for the vote tonight. And again, I'm thankful even for the people who brought up the, the concerns, because it is important for us to, to be able to show that we will take the time, we are hardworking, we are committed enough, that we will take the time to make sure we do this and do this well. I've had the privilege of being here for all three of the meetings, and I want to just state that I agree with, at the first meeting, Clerk Treasurer mentioned that he thought that permits ought to be just removed because it is an undue, what is the word I'm looking for? It's an, it's an, it's an undue stress on the city to have permits. We don't permit cats, dogs, birds, fish, and these are just birds. And they're just ladybirds. There's nothing wrong with a few ladybirds. They're pets. And, and you're connected to them in a way that you're not connected to the store-bought eggs that come out of the curtain. I don't, you know, I don't have any connection with those, but, but you're birds that you care for day in and day out. You're committed there, right? And these are good, salt-of-the-earth people right here. And they just want to take care of their families. They want government to, if you guys don't mind, just step, step over, let us handle it. We can take care of ourselves, we can take care of our own animals, we can take care of our own children, and we can take care of each other, and we can lift each other up. And I hope that you will have a vote of confidence in us, in all of us, and that you will pass this ordinance and take out any unnecessarily regulation-for-regulation sake sort of, sort of details. So I'll leave that to you. Thank you so much. Any questions? Concerns, comments? No? Your commitment.
Thanks, Tammy. Anybody else want to speak? Anybody else who has not signed up that would like to speak?
Is that it, Counselors?
Yes.
All right, that concludes public comments. Committee reports, the RDC and Compliance did not submit. The ABC, our rep called me today. CVS was renewed. Night Owl's transfer was tabled until September. Greenscape Commission is on file. Compliance did not submit. Public Safety sent a, distributed their report. The only pending report is financial. Dan?
Okay. Good evening, Counselors. In July, we made payments on the following bonds. The 2012 General Obligation Bond, $111,512.50. The 2016 RDC Bond, $246,160. The 2004 SRF Bond, $68,089.47. We also made the following lease/purchase payments. 2013 Fire Vehicles, $13,656.95. Police Vehicles, $13,354.60. We are working on the budget. Insurance is estimated to increase approximately 7%, and I am anticipating raises will equal approximately 2% as they have in the past. I am in the process of reviewing the revenue, and I also have Jeff Peters' office review that, too. It's beneficial to have those numbers verified from an outside source. The city website continues to grow and is a great asset to the citizens, is a valuable resource to many. It still has not cost the taxpayers one penny since its inception. Community events can be added free of charge by emailing me at dan.mcmillan@beechgrove.com. Thanks to the website volunteers who continue to keep it updated at no cost to the taxpayers. Financial reports, debt service, bank balances, and more can be found on the city website at www.beechgrove.com. The city corporation bank account, as of this morning, was $4,048,157.72. And the utility account had $1,227,655.20. As always, if you have any question, my door is always open. Thank you. Respectfully submitted, Dan McMillan, Clerk Treasurer.
I have a question.
All right.
On the utilities, so now that, now that does not include the storm water, correct?
Yes, it does.
Okay. So are those?
Now, on your bill, you have trash, storm water, and sewage, all on the same bill, which goes into the sewage bank account.
So what is the storm water? Is there a separation amount for the storm water?
No. That would be a separate report. It's included in that $1,227,000.
So that includes the storm water?
Yes, it does.
Any other questions for the clerk?
What percentage of that would be the, just, storm water in there, you believe? Just a guess?
Very, very minimal. It's, I want to say $3 for a resident. I'm guessing right off the top of my head. The bigger amount comes from businesses because of their surface amount of water.
Well, so that is sewage money, then, right?
Yes, the majority of it's sewage money, correct.
I think that I, a rough estimate, buddy, would be like $25,000 a month for storm water. But I don't know what the balance is.
Yeah, I was just trying to help. That amount in there maybe, at least for now, in our minds, we could break down, make, you know, we know which one was the bigger amount, of course.
And, and we can get a report on that as to how much is, in a month's time, is sewer, trash, whatever, the storm water.
I guess it might be nice to have them separated on the balance. No?
No. It's, I, I can't do it from the bank. Alls they do is give me a bank account balance, just like if you wanted something in your personal bank account, this separated and this separated, they wouldn't do that for you, and they don't do it for us. It's not separated.
Does the storm water, is there specific use for those monies?
Absolutely, there are. There are storm water projects done every year that them monies go to.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I think on, one thing to bring up is storm water was, was actually done away with, not by this administration, but there was probably several years in which there was no storm water money collected. That would come off of property taxes, and it's a good thing to see it back in the city because you've got to maintain these things, so.
The city was actually losing that revenue for a number of years, once it was taken off the property tax rolls.
All right, thank you. We'll move to unfinished business. Carry over from the last meeting. Merritt Booot, yes?
Did you intend to skip over the reading of the minutes and approval?
Oh, sorry. Sorry. I was so excited about the Merritt Board appointment that I lost track. You've been presented a printed copy of the minutes of the previous meeting dated July 10th. Floor is open for questions, comments, or corrections. There's no questions, comments, or corrections, I'll ask for a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Make a motion for the minutes as presented.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed, the same sign. Unfinished business carried over from the last meeting. Merritt Board appointment, counsel for the Fire Department. I'll defer to the President Pro Tem for direction.
The, the one name that was put out the last meeting was Don Smith, and I did speak to Mr. Smith. Actually, it was accidental. He is, wants to continue on serving on the Merritt Board, and so that is one name to be considered. He's currently on the Merritt Board. I don't know if anybody had any other names they were wanting to add. Don has been on there since the Merritt Board was started, which went, oh, probably about 10 years ago or so. Anybody have any names they want to add as far as that goes? Okay. Without any names, Merritt, you want to just take a, just go ahead and take a vote on it as?
Sure, Don Smith?
Yeah, for Don Smith.
Motion to approve Don Smith for the Fire Department Merritt Board.
Is this a, a one-year term?
Four.
Four years, okay.
I'll make said motion.
I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed, the same sign. Motion carries. General Ordinance Number 3, 2017, is up for third reading, amended. And in your packet, you should have had a sheet that looks like this.
Did you bring your?
A couple of things have happened which caused it to come back up again. One is the IURC has ruled on the agreement between the city of Beech Grove and Citizens And the second thing that's come up is Marion, is it Marion County, Dan?
Yes, Marion County.
Marion County doubled their fees for sewer liens and pre-liens. And so what we want to do tonight is I'm going to ask the council to approve General Ordinance Number 3 on third reading, but to amend it prior and delete all of the rate increases until we have a new established rate. And then to also amend the ordinance, Section 50.061, for 90-day past due, first letter, $25, second letter, sent, certified, $50, filing of lien 35. That is what, is it what Marion County charges us?
What they actually did, and this took effect with what we just filed here in August, we had no notice before then. Linda brought it to my attention. And what they actually did, they went from $14 to $32 for the filing of the lien. Postages since went up, which we was eating at. And then when we received our property taxes, which this was not unusual, they get a percentage, the Treasurer's Office, for collecting our taxes. If you have a lien on your property, you cannot just walk into our office and pay that lien off. You have to go to the city-county building to get that taken care of. Well, this passed when we got our property taxes in May. They took $2,600 for collecting these fees. It's a percentage, I don't know what it is right offhand, but this has been done for years, and we've never taken that into effect. So we figured the easiest way to do it, after talking to Linda and Chris and Pat, that this would be an easier way to do it, just on the lien letters, the first lien letter, second lien letter, both being increased, and then the actual filing of the lien. And that way, it affects those who do receive these letters.
Now, this has to do with people who owe back monies for their utilities, correct?
That is correct.
Do we have any idea how much, how much that is? And what's, what's the potential for recovering, recouping that is, what's the chance?
We recoup it all eventually.
Eventually.
Yeah. I would say 99% of it. What happens sometimes, we get beat out because someone sold the property before the lien was actually filed. But anyway, we do have a very high rate of recovery because a lien is put on to the property.
But do we have any idea, like what's, what, what the dollars, outstanding monies that?
Well, I think Linda got a check from them for like $64,000, just for this last six months.
And it comes every six months?
Yes. When your property taxes, when we receive them, there are special collections that's put on that Form 22, and it'll say, you know, what the special collections is. And it varies depending on how much you're collecting. But yes, this last one was 60, over 64.
Is that, has that made it with, just with the stability of maybe some homeownership? Has that gone down, or do you have any idea of tracking that?
Well, I told some of them earlier, the last two months, when I take the liens to the post office to have them mailed and certified, they have been down considerably. I've had liens as many as 150, and I want to say I've had about 40 the last two months. So I don't know what the reasoning is. You know, maybe the economy's better, more people, I don't, I just don't know.
But that's costing us. I mean, that's.
Yes, these are true costs. Like I say, the $2,600's never been taken into effect, but we've always charged for the first and second lien letters. And this is just try to recoup where we are. One thing that happens, Linda, she'll have a, a closing where a real estate company has called her and says, I need this done. They normally give you about four hours' notice, and so she's got to drop everything she's doing to have this done so they could do their closing, even though they've known the closing's been, you know, a week or two in advance, but they don't give us that kind of notice.
And it really doesn't cost us anything to go after these monies, other than just time?
Well, it costs us postage.
Postage, yeah.
$6.75 each of these certified letters, so they're receiving three of them.
Yeah.
So.
Pay our utilities.
And the last amendment would be, the very last sentence, last page, date changes from June 1, 2017, to immediately. So tonight, I'm, I'm asking that someone amend General Ordinance Number 3 to meet these requests. Yes, Chris?
A question. If we delete the sections that calculate the sewer use charge and the, the minimum charge, and that becomes law, do we then have authority to charge anything?
Yeah, what we currently charge.
But I don't see it really saying revert back to that. It just says re, delete that.
You can, you can put in there revert back. I just thought I would.
I think we need to do that.
Under Section 50.032, you would put revert back to the current. Under Section 50.032, you would put revert back to the current Would that be satisfactory? Counsel?
Yes.
I think the main thing is, we are not raising sewer rates this evening. This has not anything to do with sewer rates. It's for those that have not.
Right, but if we delete.
Chris is right, with that delete, based on that particular ordinance number, it might be good, amend that revert back.
Make it clarify a little more.
Yeah.
And then the Section 50.032, Dennis, what, should that also say revert?
Same thing. And then the three charges for the liens, and then the date to immediately. Any other questions? If not, I'll ask for motion to amend General Ordinance Number Three, 2017, to include this.
I'll make said motion.
I'll second.
And Dan, could you, do you have that with you? Can you read that into the record?
Dear Counsel, at the meeting coming up this Monday, I would like to move to go ahead and approve General Ordinance Number Three, 2017, with the exception of the following sections. Delete Section 50.031, calculation of sewer use charge, subsection 1, subsection 2, and subsection 2D. Section 50.032, minimum charge, base level, basis of rates, subsection A. Amend the following. Section 50.061, establishment of other non-recurring charges, authority to raise minimum charges, 90-day past due, first letter, $25, second letter, sent certified, $50, and filing of lien, $35. Last page, date changes from June 1st, 2017, to immediately.
We're adding in the deleted area where it says to revert back.
That's what you're making the amendment to.
Right, yeah.
I'm just reading this in, and then you guys can make your amendment.
Then I will make a motion to amend the delete, Section 50.031, calculation of sewer rate, sewer use charge, and have it say revert to current charges. And also, Section 50.032, minimum charge, base level, basis of rates, also to say revert to current charges.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed, the same sign. General Ordinance Number Three, 2017, is up for approval on third and final reading this evening. This time, I'll ask for motion to read by title only.
I'll make said motion.
I'll second.
And we'll vote individually, beginning on my left.
Title only.
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 Thank you. General Ordinance Number Three is up for approval on third and final reading. At this time, I'll ask the clerk to read into the record by title only.
General Ordinance Number Three, 2017, is an ordinance that amends Chapter 50, the Code of Ordinances for the City of Beach Grove pursuant to sewer and sewer rates for the treatment of wastewater.
Thank you. General Ordinance Number Three, 2017, is up for approval on third and final reading this evening. I'll ask for motion to approve.
There were some changes when we first heard this, some changes, just grammatical changes. And some of them did get fixed and some of them didn't, as I looked at the comparison. You want me to just give those to you?
Yes, would you please?
Okay. So, nothing, nothing really has changed. It's just a couple of words that.
Sure. Just circle and get them to me, and I'll, I'll get on the computer and correct them.
Okay.
General Ordinance Number Three, 2017, is up for approval this evening on third reading. I'll ask for motion to approve.
You've already got the motion, Liz and Jim. You got a first and second.
First and second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed, the same sign. And while we're on General Ordinance Three, I called all of you over the last week or so. I have started a process to get appraisals on the sewer system, sanitary sewer system. I don't know when those will be done, but I will share the results with you. And then, under Indiana statute, I have the authority to, if they are good, to begin the process to negotiate the sale of the utility. We're going to see what somebody is willing to pay. And then I will get back with you. So I wanted to share that with you this evening before we move on. General Ordinance Number Six, 2017, is up for approval on third and final reading this evening. You should have gotten a clean copy, because it was amended after the second reading. So having said that, I'll ask the clerk to read the ordinance into the record, please.
General Ordinance Number Six, 2017, is an ordinance that amends Chapter 94 and Chapter 98 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Beach Grove as it pertains to open burning. Whereas residents, the City of Beach Grove are not permitted to burn trash, rubbish, leaves, and other foliage. And whereas residents on occasion enjoy cooking out, having wiener roast, and sit around a small fire during the course of an evening. And whereas residents who live in apartment complexes should confer to apartment management concerning open fires. Whereas residents should not be constrained by representatives of local governments should they desire to have a small campfire in their backyards. Now therefore be it affirmed that the common council desires to amend Chapter 94 and Chapter 98 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Beach Grove. Now therefore be it further affirmed that the common council desires the following amendments be added to the Code of Ordinances. Delete in its entirety, Section 94.180, open burning. Section 94.081, special permits. Add the following amendments as follows. Section 98.02, L. No person shall candle or maintain any bonfire, burn leaves, rubbish, or dispose of any refuse by open burning, or such fire, or authorizes any such fire to be candled or maintained, or in any street, alley, road, land, or public grounds. L1. No person shall candle or maintain any bonfire, burn leaves, trash, or rubbish on any private land, or dispose of unwanted goods by open burning on private land. See subsection L2 for exclusions. L2. Special small fires for the purpose of wiener roast, hog roast, and other specialty cooking with open flames is permitted, provided the open fire is contained in an approved container with access to a lid, or is in the ground six inches in depth, surrounded by cement blocks or bricks, extending at least six inches in height. The fire pit may not exceed an internal diameter of 48 inches. L3. Public safety agencies upon notification may have cause to conduct an inspection, and if conditions are unsafe, mask for you to distinguish the fire. L4. The fire pit must be 15 feet away from any residential structures, including houses, garages, and barns, and must also be 15 feet away from overhead utility lines. This is determined by measuring the point on the ground which the utility crossed and measuring to the fire pit. L5. An operable garden hose and/or a five-gallon bucket of water must be readily available to extinguish the fire if necessary. L6. A person over the age of 18 must be present at the residence when a bonfire is lit. Now therefore be it affirmed that the common council desires to amend Chapter 94 and Chapter 98 of the Code of Ordinances for the City of Beach Grove. Now therefore be it further affirmed that this ordinance only applies to the above mentioned changes in Chapter 94 and Chapter 98 of the Code of Ordinances for the City of Beach Grove. Now therefore be it further affirmed that this ordinance shall go into effect immediately after passage by the common council. Signed by the council president, Pro Tem, attested by the clerk to race here, and signed by the mayor.
Thank you, Dan. General Ordinance Number Six, 2017, is up for approval on third and final reading this evening. This time, I'll ask for a motion to approve.
I'll make said motion.
I'll second the note.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed, the same sign. Please register your vote. final reading. Before I ask for a motion to read by title only, is there any amendments to the ordinance?
I'd like to make amendment regarding permits.
What page, please?
That would be 90.61.
Okay.
1, 2, 3, fourth page. We would like to strike permits required. Change that to application and design plan submission.
Wait a minute. Application.
90.61, strike permits. Application and design plan submission. So D, application for permit is, would be taken out. And then it would say, "The application must include a design plan for the coop and run, map of the yard, indicating where the coop and run will be placed, and how they will be shielded from view." Tenants must provide. That will stay the same. E would be, "Application must be approved by animal control officer who may conduct an inspection of the coop before application is approved."
And then you would strike F?
And then, yeah, and then it would strike, yeah, anything permit is issued, and then there, and then there is no refund for denied permits. That would be out as well.
How about 90.62?
Yes. Permission to keep chickens may be revoked. We'd put process. Instead of 90.62, it would be revocation, process. A would be permission to keep chickens, maybe revoked. And then C, after notification of revocation of permit, that would, of permit would be taken out. And then I believe that takes care of everything to do with permits. If anybody can help me, and any additions.
I got a question for you, Liz.
Uh huh.
The permit and drawings would go to the animal control officer?
Yes, that's what, that's the way I, that's the way, yeah.
All right, I just wanted to clarify.
Yes, strike, yeah. 90.61, yes, we're going to strike A, B, and C.
One of the, I don't want to speak too long, but there was two things that told me that I was not going to sign this ordinance. One was if we had to take permits.
Okay.
So, in order for me to sign this ordinance, you'll have to remove permits.
Okay, okay.
And then I have a real problem with government coming onto your property.
Okay. So you want to take away, that's fine. So you mean, as far as the application, do we not want an application? I mean.
Look, my neighbor, I have problems with cats like you wouldn't believe.
Okay.
And I just don't want government.
Okay.
That's why when I asked Vito to sponsor the pit ordinance for open fire, I don't think government should come onto your property and tell you you can't have a fire. That's just my personal opinion. And I feel the same way about chickens. If, if we have, if you want to have chickens, fine, but.
My neighbor has a claimed a dog poop in his backyard for five years, and then when I asked him about it, he says, "I don't see why it's necessary." He's got two, two very large dogs.
But I don't, I just don't want these people to have to come to City Hall to get a permit to have chickens.
Well, that's, we've taken care of.
And I don't want government to have to go onto your private property to, unannounced, to, to check on you. So, those have to come out, counsel, or I won't sign the ordinance. Yes, Chris?
Now, part of this, if we were to delete the whole thing that Liz has kind of talked about, and that you have referred to here, at 90.61, what about the portion where tenants must provide a notarized letter of authorization from the property owner?
I think you strike it. I just think, if we come across these people, I think, I just think we make it clear what's expected of them.
But the tenant would need, in order to have chickens, you have to have a coop.
But here, at the end of the day, we don't have landlord registry, so how do we know what's rental?
Well, the point is, is for someone to build a coop, they have to have permission from their landlord to build any structure. Am I correct? And so you, attorney, help me on that, or?
You are correct.
So, that kind of covers that one in a way.
Okay.
Yeah, probably what I see is, now, if there's a complaint against the people that have chickens, then we could ask for our animal control officer or the compliance officer to go in and check it out. Other than that?
Yeah.
Are you saying that animal control would not inspect the coops?
I don't know how we could, really, Dave. I mean, unless there's a problem.
Even when they apply for the application?
I'm going to strike that.
I would strike the whole thing.
Because I think they should. I think what you're going to get into, and no offense to the people that want it, I'm totally against this ordinance, and I let it be known from the beginning, just like this young lady here who has them, or had them, and they're kind of gone now, I guess. But at least you have a privacy fence up. And that I could go for. But I'm telling you guys, and a lot of you people aren't here, you don't fall in the category, but there's going to be rednecks out there that want to build their own coop, and it's going to look like shit. I tried building a damn doghouse once, and it looked like that. I had to get a guy that knew what the hell he was doing to build a decent-looking doghouse, so it wouldn't look like that. My problem's going to be, is when I can look at my back neighbor and see this thing, like I have a problem right now, that's a real piece of crap, falling down, not taken care of, and, and let's say, like I'm one of my neighbor's cases.
I live next door to you.
You sure are. But I got some bad news for you. If he's got, if he's got chickens, they're going to be in his pool swimming. But, but this man, I'm telling you, it looks like crap, and I'll, I'll have a hard time selling my house. If I, if I knew they would be like this lady, but who can afford to put up a privacy fence? Hers is nice-looking. You don't even know there's chickens there. This is going to be a problem. I'm telling you, there's going to be.
My neighbor's trampoline is a problem. Her swing set is a problem. Her fence that's falling down is a problem.
I got the same problem, ma'am. That's what I'm trying to tell you. So, so, and, and you know what these are called? These are called farm animals. And it's hard for people to get used to farm animals being in the city. You've got to understand that. I, the lady, the lady in the back, wait, let me finish. The lady in the back mentioned you guys coming together as a group. I've got more emails here against this than, they're right here, tenfold.
Yeah, where's the body?
It doesn't matter where they show or not.
In all fairness to Counselor Harrison, I've received emails from citizens that oppose this very strongly. And then I've received emails from people who support this. So, both sides is out there, so.
Very much. And that's, that's what I have to look at. It's just not five or six of you, or, and you were on, the lady in the back, you were on the Facebook, and you seen some of the comments made. Vito has an ordinance, which I like, about disposing of chickens. How many did you see on there that they talked about, "Oh, I know what I'll do with my chicken. When his two years are up for laying eggs, they're going to kill him." And what did, what did they say? They said they were going to kill him, and, and no one will come on their property to, nobody allowed on their property to take care nobody allowed on their property to take care of it. In other words, they were going to use them for supper, is what they were saying. And that's against, that's against the, the ordinance.
Are you a vegan?
I'm sorry?
Are you a vegan?
Are you?
No.
Well, there you go.
I eat chicken.
So do I.
And I have no problem with it. If you were a vegan...
But you know what the ordinance says, don't you?
Does it say? I know what it says.
Well, there you go.
Which is fine. And there are locations, just so you know. And again, what I wanted to say just a moment ago, Councilon Harrison, is that when there is a problem, like you see the community coming together here, I also want to point out that people's dogs get loose all the time.
Oh, I know.
And I, I didn't get a chance to look at the numbers, but I would be very curious to look at the Facebook, because I watch those posts, and I, and I've found people's dogs and reunited them with my neighbors on multiple occasions. I would like to know how often animal control act, how, what percentage animal control actually gets called out, what percentage our community takes care of itself? Because we take care of each other. I don't go and, and I don't go and holler and scream at my, my neighbor when their dog gets out. I say, come here, puppy, and I take them home to their neighbor, because we care about them.
I'm not talking about...
So you have problems with dogs, swing sets, all this other stuff? I have chickens too, then.
I have a problem with my neighbor. I let her mind her own business. We give you a plethora. We give you a plethora of reasons why, and also because I don't like the color lime green on my neighbor's house, and it looks ugly to me.
I don't, I could understand it.
And I don't have, none of my neighbors have lime green. I'm just, I'm throwing that out there. I am not the lord of...
Counsel?
Okay, we're out of order. We're out of order.
Counsel?
I wanted to know, on the amendment, does that, how does that go in with the structure of the chicken coop? Does anybody check to see whether it is appropriate or not?
I don't know how you...
I mean, originally, that was, there's, there were things listed in there about how the chicken coop would be, how far it would be away from the fence, and so...
If you're welcome to come to my house and see my chicken coops, and you can see how, one of them my three children built and one of them I bought, because I'm getting rid of the one that we built. So if anyone wants to come to my house and see our coops, they're welcome to.
Well, I appreciate that. I, I think the thing I was just trying to make is, is that it, you know, and I'm, my plan was to vote yes. I think I've already mentioned that before the, the meeting, but I did want to hear about it. But the one thing that, for those people who have a fear of chickens, the one thing that they had, and I don't mean that they're scared of a chicken, I just mean, don't want to see a chicken ordinance, that they had one thing on their court, and that was, we would try to do some lease regulations involved.
Counsel, I would, I would say, strike ninety point six one and ninety point six two.
I know there's been talk tonight about property values going down by the neighbors and everything. Well, in mine, where I live, there's a woman that, pretty well has probably ten cats in her backyard on leashes. And talking about smell, that's a smell you can't get over. And there's another house close to them, went up for sale, and people would not buy it because of the smell from the cats. I don't, I know that situation with chickens, there is a little bit of a smell compared to cat and dog, it's not even close.
Mrs. Reed supports that, actually. The smell from dog feces and cat feces is like by many worse than feces.
Chicken, not even close.
And I have through easy documentation.
And I've seen the same thing. Other...
Histoplasmosis is for pigeons, not chickens.
No?
Yes.
All right.
So we'll have to address ninety point six two as well?
What would be the amendment to the ordinance?
Strike ninety point six one. Strike?
Ninety point six two. We have to address, we have to address the course of action would be taken if we found out that they weren't abiding by the ordinance, and that's addressed in ninety point six two A. We have to have some type of, has to be written out on how we would go about disallowing that house to have chickens.
Would it be like if somebody weren't properly caring for their dog, it would roll back to the ordinance without...
If that's already, if that's already written in the animal ordinance, then...
Yeah, if that's, yeah, if that's already in an animal ordinance, then it's already covered.
Yeah.
We don't need another ordinance for that.
Do we know that's covered?
Chief, do you know the, any stipulation on the animal control ordinance?
Not specifically, because chickens are outfall, so if they're domesticated animals, to, that, that would be stipulated that chickens would be considered an ill-protected animal.
My chicken does this to my daughter on her bad anxiety days, and Mrs. Reed is actually the principal, she allowed it on her bad, bad days, and the chicken is kind of became this whole mascot for a couple of years.
You have a service chicken?
She is.
I have a friend that wants one.
Yes. On her bad anxiety days, she's basically been a little, a little, doesn't matter how old she is.
My problem if, if you delete, I'm going to be totally against it. I'll probably be the only one that votes against it, but that's the way it is. If you delete these sections, then why are we even saying you have to have a coop or anything? It seems to me like we're going to end up letting them be a free running, however the hell they want them.
That's exactly what...
You know, and, and so if you eliminate this stuff, you're...
That's not necessarily...
You're not reading the ordinance, though. It is, I'm saying if you eliminate these things.
Oh, it has to have a coop.
But if you eliminate what he's got in the ordinance, we're saying they're going to be free roaming or anything they want.
They're not allowed predators or predators that...
Are we going to vote on the amendment up and down or something?
Yeah. Call, call vote?
They're on the media.
Call a vote?
Whatever you're ready.
Yeah, let's go.
Call the order.
We're going to call for a vote on this.
This is a vote on the amendment?
On the amendment. It would be to strike ninety point six one, ninety point six two, and to amend ninety point six zero A, where it would say each single family dwelling, strike holding a permit, and then you continue with may keep no more than six domestic chickens, hens, at any time. That's the amendment.
And it says penalty C ninety point nine nine. What is, what is ninety point?
That would be under the animal, that would be under the ordinances for animal.
So that's, that's covered then? Okay, so I, so it's...
That's the amendment.
Okay, yep. I'll make said motion.
Second?
I second.
All those in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say same sign.
Aye.
Oh, better take a vote.
We have voice, folks.
Yeah. Start with Buddy.
I vote negative on the amendment.
I vote yea.
No.
Nay.
Yea.
Yea.
No.
No. So that would be four no's, is that right?
Four no's.
It does not pass.
Okay.
Okay. General, general ordinance number seven is up for approval on third and final reading. This time I'll ask for motion to waive the rules to read by title only.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Go to the left, Buddy.
Title only.
Title only.
Title only.
Title only.
Title only.
Title only.
General Ordinance Number Seven, 2017, is up for approval on third rea, and final
reading. I'll ask the clerk to read it into the record by title only.
General Ordinance Number Seven, 2017, is an ordinance that amends Chapter Ninety of the Code of Ordinances for the City of Beach Grove percent to animals.
Thank you. General Ordinance Number Seven, 2017, is up for approval on third and final reading. This time I'll ask for a motion to approve.
Make said motion.
I'll second.
Second?
I'll second.
Second? Better go by signal. Single vote, Buddy?
Aye.
Aye.
Nay.
Aye.
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 It passes six to one. Please register your vote. Okay.
So if you're not going to sign it, Mayor, what's that mean for the ordinance?
Well, I have ten days to, to, if I don't sign it within ten days, it will automatically die. And then you have the right to over, overturn my veto.
Isn't that your name?
If I, if I don't sign it, I, and I, and I'm not going to sign it, then I will officially notify you immediately. And I have to do that within ten days.
And then what?
And then at the next meeting, you have the right to overturn my veto.
And what vote count does that take?
Uh, you...
Three, four? Five votes.
Five votes.
Okay.
Under new business, we have three items tonight, counsel. The first item is SCBA request from Beach Grove Fire Department. And I want to preface it by stating that in this year's budget, you folks budgeted money so that the fire department can enter into a lease purchase agreement for air packs. They have changed the rules, and the chief will explain that, so he has another option that I think you folks should hear, and then I'll defer to your approval, since it's a budget matter. Rob?
Mayor and council, thank you this evening. As Mayor Buckley stated, we were allotted money for new SCBA lease this year in 2017. There's been changes to NFPA standards nineteen eighty-one and nineteen eighty-two, and the manufacturers have not progressed where they need to be in seventeen with the new updates for the air packs. We anticipate the air pack manufacturers to have the new updates available for purchase by early spring of 2018. We are anticipating eight to ten months from today's date. We're looking at April where these air packs are available for purchase. We do not want to place the city in a position where we would purchase an antiquated air pack this year, get into lease purchase, and have to do our own upgrades to those air packs, and have additional costs to the city. And talking some of the manufacturers, the anticipated cost for the upgrades would be anywhere from fifteen to twenty-four hundred dollars. So you're talking roughly another fifty thousand dollars for upgrades and being stuck with an antiquated pack and more money. So we believe the most fiscal responsible thing for us to do is bring to your attention, let you know where we stand. I had the opportunity to speak to the mayor and Dan, where we need to go as a department from here. What we would like to do is purchase air packs for lease purchase in 2018, just kind of start that lease over, first year for 2018. Out of the lease money for air packs, we included our tick hammers. We purchased two tick hammers this year already out of that fund, but the rest of the money this year, what we would like to do is go ahead and purchase about seven new portable radios. The portable radios, all of our radios are outdated, they're up for replacement, they're antiquated, we can't receive replacement parts. In 2018, all the new radios will be out and available for purchase, and we're trying to get ahead of the game. Since we have to replace all of our radios, we'd like to use this remaining money this year that we had set aside for SCBA to purchase seven portables and kind of get ahead of the game in replacing those. Right now, I'll, I'll have Chief Pierce speak about our radios and where we're at, but I believe we have like three or four radios. They're out of service, where we would have to replace parts on those, they're difficult to find, and I believe they're about a thousand dollars per radio to get fixed. So again, trying to be fiscally responsible to the city, not spend money on antiquated radios that were never placed in the near future, kind of tackle some of these small issues right now and get ahead of the game. Jim, would you like to explain the radios?
Yeah. I think one of the meetings, we talked about the, the current radio systems that we have, or the radios that we have are end of life. The end of this year, they will no longer be serviceable and be able to get those repaired. So, you know, we've, we've been talking here for a couple of years about needing to get new radios or start buying new radios to replace our current radios. With that being said, we've had three radios now that have gone down, they've been taken out of service because they are, you know, just wearing out. They're, they're almost fifteen years old, so they're sitting downtown right now, waiting for a decision on us for them to go ahead and see if they can find parts to replace, repair them, and they're estimating, give or take, about a thousand dollars per radio to fix. So we've, we've decided, at least at this point, not to get those repaired in hopes that we can move forward and just start replacing radios. Again, like I said, that's, that's if they can find parts for these particular radios. You know, there might, somebody might have, still have some stuff sitting on the shelf that we may need, but each one has different problems, so. Again, it would, it would help us if we could go ahead and start this process of replacement. It would probably make us a little money ahead instead of investing into these, these radios that are, are not going to be, you know, they're end of life, you know? So that's what we're hoping that the council will consider this evening. Any, any questions over the radios at this point? I know I fielded a lot of questions the last time I was up here about radios. Be happy to answer anything else you might have, or have had come up since then.
Have to have a radio. I mean, the consequences of not having a radio is...
Our, our whole job kind of centers around our ability to communicate with, with dispatchers with each other, with other agencies, crews in and outside of buildings, and so on and so forth, with the hospitals. I mean, we, we use them as much for the medical side of things as we do the fireside. You know, we're, we're in constant contact with our receiving hospitals, with the physicians at the hospitals that are, that are, you know, giving us orders out on the scene. So, yeah, it's, it's, it's vital. We, yeah, we, we can't do away with it. We have to have the radios, and we have to have, we have to have dependable radios.
What's the cost per unit of new ones?
I knew you was going to ask that, and I didn't bring those with me.
Ballparking.
Uh, just, just shy of five thousand for affordable. Is it fifty, fifty-two, fifty-two for affordable?
When you talk about backup equipment, do other departments have like a surplus? Can you ever, I, but I think you told me this before, these radios are specific to individual, right? Or are they, are the, the radios that you're talking about are specific to the, the person carrying them, or?
Yes, they're identified by the person carrying, as far as the position on the apparatus, but all of our radios are assigned to the apparatus themselves.
Okay. But you can't just go to a surplus license, say, or can you? Or do you have the availability of going to other, surrounding departments, or?
The surrounding departments are getting rid of these radios.
Getting rid of them? That's all the more, yeah.
We're not probably going to have, we might be able to do that right now, might be able to borrow one for a little while.
Yeah.
But everybody's phasing their radios out, and they're using them as, as trade-in value on their new radios, which, I don't know if I've brought this up before.
Yeah.
If, if we keep ours past the end, their end of life, their value becomes zero for us.
Yeah, I think you did. You have done, yeah.
So, you know, now, you know, if we purchase some now, we can, we can use those as some, I mean, there's not a whole lot, a couple hundred dollars, but that's still, a couple hundred dollars that we could probably get out of them now that we won't be able to get six months from now.
How many handheld do you have?
Uh, we have forty.
Forty?
And then each, each truck has a radio, a mobile radio.
Yeah.
The vehicles have new radios in them already, correct?
Two, two of the vehicles do. The, the most recent vehicles that we purchased, we folded that in, in preparation of this, we folded in the price of a new radio into the purchase of that vehicle.
Now, I got a question, Rob, because when we talked a couple weeks ago, we were talking about ten. Now you mentioned something else that you're purchasing. What would that be? Didn't you mention something at the beginning, something you was going to buy?
Air, air packs, we're, we had the lease...
Well, no, I understand that, but I thought you were talking about the tick...
You mentioned the tick.
The tick hammer, we bought, yeah, we purchased two tick hammers this year out of that lease money. So there's about forty thousand and the interest left over. So there's about $40,000 in the interest left over to spend on radios.
May explain.
And that would purchase us about a, a tick hammer is our thermal imaging camera.
Oh, yeah.
And they're on the engines, and those cameras, you go in a smoke-filled, dark environment, and it will show heat, it will show body heat, and if we, if you have a light ballast, it's overheated. The guys can use those cameras, look for heat in the walls, look for heat from the ballast, and they can see a person, a body. So that's what those are used for.
Now, you say you have forty handhelds?
No, we, we'd have the...
Were you including, is it forty handhelds? Did you say? And then, of course, every apparatus has a mobile, right?
Right.
Because I, you know, it's funny, because you have about the same number of handhelds as the police does, and they each have their own radios, so it just shows how much you need on an apparatus, I guess, right? So, okay.
Yeah, we have six per engine, so there's one per seated position, and then we have a spare with a headset attached for the engineer, so that they, when they get out pumping a fire, they grab this out of their compartment, and it's already set up with a headset, so they can wear it and hear and still operate the...
Do they, do they charge, the radios charge on the apparatus, or do they?
No.
They don't? Okay.
No, we have charging banks at the stations that we, we just swap the batteries out when they get low.
Right.
Now, we tried the charging on the apparatus for a while, and that...
Well, I was just curious, you might have, you'll have an apparatus that might not be used at the time, but it's still going to have the handhelds that are needed for who would operate that apparatus, right?
Yes.
Okay.
And I apologize if I've asked this before, but these are at end of life, and then the new ones, what's their duration of life?
Do you have the numbers on that, ten years?
Ten years.
Ten years, okay, okay. So this is a good thing to do to, for ten years.
I'd just like to state, when Rob and I spoke, I think this is a great way to go about doing this. I could actually encumber the funds until 2018, but this way here, with your permission, we can go ahead and start buying, well, he said seven radios, and so that'll take care of the three that's broke down and still give them a few extra. And personally, I can't see putting $1,000 into repairs for something that's $5,000 and going to be obsolete at the end of this year, or this next year, I'm sorry, 2018. So I would encourage the council to move forward on this, and we'll budget for the other air packs in next year.
Help me understand, how many apparatus do we have?
We have three engines, we have three ambulances, we have a support vehicle, which is our inspector, Dave Carlson, and the battalion chief vehicle, and then mine and Chief Pierce's vehicle. And on your command buggies, like the battalion, you will have a radio and one of those headsets, just for the command purposes. When you're out, it's a very dynamic, loud scene, and the IC commanders will need those headsets. And those are, it's an additional radio, but you can't walk around normally with, you know, a headset on, but, and you can't replace those just because you have a fire, you can't take the extra couple minutes just to put a headset on. So you need the versatility of both handhelds.
So help me understand that count, if there's three engines, and you said six per engine, that's eighteen, and the ambulances at each have what, two?
Two.
And we have three ambulances, so there are six, so that's, why would we need forty?
We, we have the support radios also.
Yeah.
In special events, fall festival, you have the fireworks, and there are spares backups that we utilize, and with, with anything mechanical, if they break down, we've actually decided not to have some of those replaced because of the expense, and with those being the end of life, it's better not to have those fixed, replaced, repaired, because you're going to be purchasing new the next year. So they actually really saved us having this, you know, additional spares radios to have.
Thanks, Chief.
But you budgeted for air packs, and they're not going to buy air packs this year. They recommended to purchase radios, so I think it's only fair that this body approve that change since the intent was to purchase air packs. So I'll ask for a motion to approve the chief's request.
Before you do, what were we going to spend on air packs as opposed to what are we going to now spend on radios?
It's, we had $50,000, I think, budgeted, and you spent $10,000 on the cameras, so it leaves about $40,000 to go towards the radios.
And if they said they need forty at $5,000 each, isn't that $200,000?
Yeah.
Yeah, they're not going to be able to do everything.
Yeah, we can't do that this year, we only have $50,000. And not only that, we're going to run in the same thing with the police department. They've got approximately forty that they're going to need at $5,000 plus. So this is not a cheap fix, but they've got to have them, it's that plain and simple. I don't care if you're a policeman or a fireman, it's...
So are we saying we're only going to spend $40,000 on, on radios? And that's as many as they can?
This year, this year.
For this budget year.
Just this budget year. The rest of them will be in 2018.
Okay.
And they're good through MECA, as far as I understand, through 2018, police and fire both.
Well, I'll, I'll go ahead and make a motion, budget-wise, that the SCBA money, the remainder of that money be allowed to be used for radios for this budget year.
I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. Motion passes. Chief? Um, next order of new business is Resolution Number 11, 2017, the council permit for the Marine Center. I just wanted to put that in writing, what you folks did, I thought that was a good gesture. That gentleman was trying to be environmentally friendly, and the council worked with him. So, Dan, if you could, read Resolution Number 11 into the record, please.
Resolution Number 11, 2017, is a resolution that recognizes recent action taken by the city council to work with local business to promote green energy and solar power. Whereas the city council desires to work with local businesses to make improvements in their investments, and whereas the city council sets the fee for permits and inspections when construction activity occurs within the city of Beach Grove, and whereas the city council desires to promote green energy throughout the city of Beach Grove and encourages local businesses to do whatever they can to promote environmental causes, and whereas the city council wants to ensure public disclosure when working with local businesses and conducting business. Therefore, be it affirmed that the city council has assisted a local business to promote green energy by approving a special one-time charge of $1,000 for permits for the installation of solar panels and to re-roof the building where the solar panels will be installed. Therefore, be it further affirmed that the city council's desires to work with any business to promote green energy, and the same offer shall be afforded to all who may come forward desiring assistance for the installation of green energy solar panels. Therefore, be it further affirmed that this resolution shall be placed in the record for public inspection upon passage by the city council, signed by the council president pro tem, attested by the clerk treasurer, and signed by the mayor.
Uh, any comments or questions from council members? If not, I'll ask for a motion to approve Resolution Number 11, 2017.
I'll make said motion.
I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. Please register your vote. Last order of new business is a update to the council from the police department and fire department concerning new station progress. Chief? Good evening, council. This will probably be the last time I'm up for the night. The police station, we're looking, as you know, for a new building upgrade, fix, whatever. I have a meeting with one of the companies this Wednesday at nine o'clock to go over some cost estimates. The last cost estimate I got was in combination with the fire department, and they were told I can't do that, it needs to be split. That time, the cost estimate, I think, was $22,500 for the feasibility study, to see what's wrong with the building, if it can be improved, or what our needs are for a new building. It's a lot less than what Indianapolis is going through with their $20 million, but even if it's half, $11,000, it's not a budgeted item, and Dan can attest to that, it's a lot of money to try to come up with. So after next Wednesday, I should have a better answer as far as what their cost is that they want, so that they can even look at this project to see what's feasible, if the building's good, building's bad, if it can be expanded or new. Questions?
I think we can tell you that it's bad.
Yeah, I would concede, or, well, I don't know if that's the right word, but saying the other day that even if you had a lot of good things over there, it's been around a while, you got to look at the next 50 years, so that's why the council wants you guys to look into this stuff.
I got a question, Mark. Have you guys done anything as far as calling out someone that knows mold, whether or not it is feasible to have this remediated? I mean, this building we're in right now up here, there was inches of water on the floor, on the tables, it was uninhabitable for two years. So it can be fixed. I'm not saying that that's the case. I don't even know that it is mold. I mean, I know mold's not good, there's a killer mold, and there are some that won't harm you. So I guess my question is, has anyone looked into that?
I know we do have mold. I think all of you have seen it in the basement. This is one of those things that they will come in and look at to see if it's fixable.
Well, we had companies come out that didn't charge us anything to look and, you know, tell us what kind of mold it is, whether it's harmful, and so, I mean, I think that's the first place we need to start, is look at what it is, you know, whether it's harmful to individuals or not.
And I would, well, I was going to say, I do agree with that. I don't think somebody can go in and make a difference, it's the catch-all, whether a new facility should be built or not. I think that's another issue. But for the time being of having, you know, how long is it going to take for a new building gets here? That's going to be all the questions coming up, would be the, what do you do in between those times anyway? So if it's possible to make it somewhat better. I know apartments done things over the years, but I really don't know what they've done, truthfully.
Well, I know eight years ago, seven years ago, that the outside was dug up, and they put a rubber barrier on the outside to try to keep the moisture down, and then that didn't work. And five years ago, we had the blocks scraped and treated and then repainted, and the mold came back. All I'm saying, this company is going to do everything. I guess I could call a company out just for the mold. But again, it's been treated, they've worked on it inside, and they worked on it outside, and it hasn't solved it. And I don't know if it's in the blocks, if it's coming from the top.
When Dan was referring to this, I know the board of health was down on us citing us probably every quarter concerning that. Are they, are they citing you guys?
No, there's...
You going to call them or something?
We don't want to call them.
Well, I mean, this is a public meeting, they're going to know about it now.
Well, that's my thought. They could come in and make you vacate the place, and the occupancy, occupancy stress in your building is a lot different than the occupancy stress in this building. You've got a lot more...
Well, that building runs 24 hours a day, seven days a week, so it's...
They didn't make us vacate this place, they're not going to make us vacate.
We, we tried, Chris.
What's that, Dennis? What'd you say?
That $22,000 figure just went up a little bit.
That might be...
Appreciate it.
Yeah, I know the outside, I spent $7,000 or $8,000 just on the inside a few years ago, and the outside, when they dug it up, was probably close to $15,000. So it's been $35,000, it's been, tried to fix it, and it doesn't work.
Well, I know in insurance, what little I know about dealing with some restoration companies, and I don't know where the mold was here, because I never got to see it, but...
The entire thing.
If it's in these walls here, they can remove these walls and replace them. But from what I understand, if it gets in the block, you got a real problem, because they, they'd have to do the same thing, roof the block.
It's hard to leave the basement wall.
Block goes to exterior buildings, so you're talking about taking the building down, really.
There's a company that was used to come out here on the opposite end, and even to check the levels and things like that, look at it, they were kind of costly, and that was paid for by private money, if you remember right. So that was a political war at the time on mold, but hopefully that's not fiscal.
It really don't make any difference, the apartment has outgrown that building anyway.
I agree.
Yes, it has.
I'd just like to make one other comment since you brought it up, and that was the $20 million that Indianapolis City County Council gave for this. That was done under the Ballard administration, I think theirs was only $15 million, but that is for, not necessarily a police and fire station, that's for the courts, that's for the jail.
That's for a very large building, yes.
Absolutely. So there's a lot of things that, you know, and plus Indianapolis got a lot more money than we do, they spend more in a day than we spend in a year.
So Dan, if we keep under $20 million, it's...
Yeah, we're all right.
You have, you have that, so...
We won't pass that half.
All right, thanks, chief. Rob?
Next Wednesday afternoon, I'll be meeting with the designer, engineer, same people Mark are dealing with in the afternoon. With ours is, it's a lot different. A lot of fire stations have been built by these companies here in central Indiana, so they're well-versed with the pre-planning stages and coming in and doing the needs assessment. With us, it's a little different, because we're currently in two buildings, we would be combining our resources and putting our fire operations into one new building. With that, I did a budget proposal, and kind of want to give everyone an idea of the infrastructure needs at Station 56, because these needs are...
For those of us that are Beach Grovees, what, what station is that?
Over here on our Albany Street Station.
Okay.
When you take a look, we had you guys in the building, and we showed you a lot of the issues we had with the concrete pads, roof repair, the maintenance room, concrete repair, the living conditions. Some things that, those, those items can be fixed with money, we could throw money at it and fix them, but some things that cannot be addressed is the living space, the bathroom space, the changing areas, the storage areas we need for our EMS medication and equipment. Currently, it's in a bay, and our EMS medications really need to be in a controlled environment with heat and air conditioning, keep those medicines, the shelf life prolonged, and that's very important in the business we do. We look at Station 57, we have those same issues at that station, so by having a new building is so help address these issues. I'm very concerned at Station 57, where we do have four or five females working there. Again, they're sharing one single restroom facility, so they are living under difficult conditions out there. But we are moving forward, and again, we're meeting, doing some conceptual development designs and taking a look at what our needs will be non... designs and taking a look at what our needs will be, not only now, but try to prolong 20, 50 years in the future. So, thank you.
Thank you, chief.
Hey, Rob, I got a question. Did I hear you right that the two stations would go down to one if a new one was built?
The plan is to have all the fire operations into the new central station and what we, what I would imagine the model for the fire department operations be is Station 57, the one that we just had the new roof replaced a couple of years ago and a lot of the infrastructure with the kitchen upgrades and upgrades in the station, keep that for our EMS station where we would run our ambulance operations out of and also our community-based paramedicine program out of that station. That way, our response time to the citizens of Beach Grove will still remain under the eight-minute average in the community.
What would happen to 56?
That's up for...
I would, I will come out with a plan here very shortly, once we get through a couple of things. But that is still owned by the city and that was constructed with federal money back in 1977, '78. So some of that has to remain as a fire station, a very small part of it, but it can be reused and I have some ideas that I would like to share with you.
Does the station over on Churchman, does it have separate men and women restroom facilities?
Yes, it has a single restroom for the women and currently you have four to five women sharing that single facility.
Well, my point is if you make it an ambulance bay only, that you're still gonna have that same problem, are you not?
What we're, can look at, Chris, we have a decreased number of people at that station. Plus you have, depending on the outlay with the personnel, they're working 12-hour shifts. You have a larger male restroom facility where we can do some designs to that building and make it more accessible. You do the shared bathroom facility.
Do all EMS personnel work 12 hours?
Through St. Francis program, our St. Francis program, they work the 12-hour shifts and that's what adds additional females to the station. And it's a great program and glad to have them in there.
This off the record, and I've said it before, but being up at St. Francis, quite often, just constant praise of Beach Grove medics. And part of it, of course, we've got St. Francis and Beach Grove together, but just it feels good to be here in Beach Grove and to hear those kind of compliments and they're very busy. There's always a Beach Grove truck in there along with everybody else all the time.
Thank you.
One last question. If you went to one station, I understand you would have an ambulance station, what would that do to the manpower? Wouldn't it lower your manpower?
Well, yes, at Station 57, it'd decrease the manpower, so you'd have less people needing those restroom facilities at the same time.
No, I don't mean restroom facilities. I'm just talking in general. Fewer employees.
Oh, yes, it'd be more comfortable for them at that station. Station 57, which is on Churchman Avenue, when it was built in 1970, I think no way did they anticipate having seven to eight people at that station like we do now when it was first opened. I think...
Probably had three, two to, two to three people at that station.
Three on a good day.
Three on a good day. And I'm sure some of the older guys say it was crowded then. Now they're stuck with seven or eight people at that station.
And I think what you're referring to is your staffing level for that station would reduce because you wouldn't have a truck there.
Yeah, you would only, you'd go from two stations down to one, so your overall manpower would be reduced.
Yeah, for the ambulance at that station, of course.
No, I'm talking firefighters. If you went to one station instead of two stations...
No, we'd still need the same amount of manpower.
That's why when you're referring to your building, you have to look at it differently because of, you're gonna have more fire trucks and more people there.
Correct.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That concludes new business. Council comments, we'll start, Buddy?
Okay. I do wanna thank everyone who came here to speak tonight on chickens and Mr. Dan, I appreciate your comments because as we move forward, these are things that I know that everybody's gotta keep in mind for their neighbors and so forth. Also wanna congratulate Don Smith on the merit board. He comes, the merit board people on there really, did you have something there or are you all right?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm fine.
That's a signal, maybe I'm going the wrong way here, maybe, but he really, the people he serves with really recommend him highly. He just is a good team player. I wanted to say something about the structures in the police and fire buildings and I just hope in the future that things will work out because it will, the people of Beach Grove, an independent city, we deserve to have good things that work for us. I mean, I get, you get, I don't think we're building places just for show. We're building them because we, we go a long time with our new car. I know everybody, someone buying a new car every two years. Well, Beach Grove doesn't do that. But to somewhat be an independent city and everyone says, well, I wanna, I wanna live in this town. They got brand-new stuff everywhere. Well, that's good, but I think this city proves that when it's time to do it, we've given our due. We let something run its course and we, as a city, also deserve that. I do hope when it comes to funding mechanisms, and I'm not trying to start a fight here, there has to be more than one way to look at how to fund this. Tomorrow, I mean, if we could sell something for a bunch of money, what happens if the state come in and says no more selling of utilities or parks or whatever you wanna sell? And they said that, does that mean we never get a new station? I hope not. Someone says that the utility's not worth anything, does that mean you don't get a new building? I hope not because they ought to be treated separately in every regards. And I also think we need to step very lightly in this area. It is a funding mechanism for the city and I refer to our utility. And second of all, you know, our job's to take care of ourselves in Beach Grove. You know, we, we wanna be a city, we need to step up to the plate and be a city. And I think that the mayor and the clerk and the council does that presently. But I just think that we're responsible for taking care of our own. There's things over the years that I haven't liked. I like to see us clean our own sweep-sweeper out there. I don't like to contract it. Is it maybe cheaper? It'd be cheaper to do everything by somebody else in this city. I mean, Irvington's living the dream over there. Indianapolis, their taxes are probably, could be cheaper. The question is, do we wanna be an independent city where we have a voice in our own government? So I know I'm taking a little bit of time here. I do wanna say that the mayor, moving forward to always find out what things are valued is important and I think that that is a good thing. With that, I better end because I talk too much.
Well, I'd like to thank everybody that showed up tonight, for or against our business. In light, mainly I wanna thank our firefighters and police officers. A lot of people in communities, our community and other communities, take them for granted. Every time we see a firefighter or a police officer, we could thank, should thank them for what they do and they're, both of them put their lives on the line for us. That's all I got.
You know, Buddy, I noticed the mayor sit down when you started talking and he got, he got up when it went to gym.
It wasn't, it wasn't a personal message or anything.
But, but tonight, I have nothing to cluck about, so that's all I got.
All right. We're gonna fly the coop.
Oh, my goodness.
Just thanks for everybody that turned out tonight. I appreciate it all.
In memory of Lieutenant Aaron Allen. Peace. Thank you, guys, for all you do.
Yeah, thanks to the police and fire department. One thing I would like to say, and I don't know how the rest of the councilors feel, but if you've ever watched one of these meetings on YouTube, they're difficult to hear, they're difficult to see.
Thank goodness.
And everyone is getting equipment upgraded. I would like to see some money set aside for the council and the court to upgrade this equipment and the videotaping equipment. So if that's something we could do, that sure would be nice. That's all I've got.
I just wanna thank everybody for coming and God bless our police and fire. All right, couple announcements. We're waiting on word from Oprah from our grant for planning of the Main Street facade program. That's, we should hear any day on that. Safeway, if all goes planned, we'll have a soft opening by the end of the week and then they'll have a grand opening. I'll pass, whenever that's gonna be, I'll pass that on to you folks. Dan, is September budgets, right?
Well, hopefully, yes.
So there won't be anything on the agenda except for budget items for next meeting. We meet September the 5th, which is Tuesday. Labor Day is Monday the 4th. We will not meet. Citizens Energy is wrapping up a water main replacement project on North 7th. They're tying in laterals, so they should be done pretty soon. Then they are going to go over to 18th between Albany and Maine. They're gonna start there on Wednesday. Albany will be closed for about half the day on Wednesday and then they're going to move south on 18th Avenue and then when they get to Maine, they're gonna go west on Maine to 25th Street. They're gonna replace the water mains through there. That is a major, major project. And then hopefully, I know they're gonna pave at least half the road on Maine. We're trying to talk them into paving all of the road on Main Street. And then once they're done with 18th and Churchman, or Main Street, I'm sorry, then they're gonna move over to 20th Street between Churchman and Southern and do the same thing there. So we're talking about millions of dollars that they're investing in water lines through the city. So it starts Wednesday and they hope to be done with everything by the end of this year. So they are moving, moving fast. And you should've gotten these in your packets. It was just for your general information and nothing more, but I wanted to share that with you. So having said that, I asked for a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I wanted to say something real quickly on Safeway. As a, as a mayor, well, as any of you, the full-time Beach Grove group here, you and Dan or whatever, you got to be, it's gotta be a happy feeling to know someone's gonna be in that spot because without that, it can start a domino effect. So I know you were a big cheerleader there and that was, that was, it's just good to see that.
Well, it's, I tell people that in all reality, I had very little to do with it. Craig and the Marsh people had been talking back and forth and we had reached out to a couple of other companies other than Safeway, not knowing that Safeway was interested. So about three months ago, Safeway contacted Craig and my office and then we talked and they were already interested in the property. Once this thing with Marsh started, they liked the location, they were, they're an independent, so they started tracking it and then when Marsh filed bankruptcy, they began dealing with Marsh. So the first, very first conversation I had with them, I don't know if you've ever talked to anybody, you get, and you get the feeling, boy, they're way ahead of you in this. That was the feeling I had. So they had already started the process. So I'm really happy that Safeway's there. They're, they're doing quite well inside. I've had a tremendous response from the people that live in that area who are very grateful that there's something there where they can go get something to eat. And you just don't know that until you hear that. So I'm very happy about it, but hey, I'm glad they're here and...
It helps the other stores up in the area and all.
Yeah, so we'll see what happens, you know. So anyway, motion to adjourn.
I'll make said motion.
Yeah, good motion.
Meeting adjourned, 9:20.